All right, the school board meeting is ordered. Mr. Flair is over here. Please join me in the first allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I have the door propped open. They just need to know to walk in this way.
Seeing this as Linda's last board meeting for this, I'd just like to give you a little bit of something because it's something I appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda review. Anything can be okay?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, acceptance of minutes. I agree for acceptance of the building and maintenance committee meeting on April 4th. And the members at that were Tim Eldridge, Jim Pittman, Dr. Jinn, and Dana Spreeder.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, Tim makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Jim. Okay, those in favor, Tim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Dr. Manning?
Yes.
And Dana? Dana?
Yes.
All right.
Oh wait, I wasn't on the board.
You weren't on the board.
I wasn't on that one. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, next time.
Next time.
Okay, approval of the minutes of the school board meeting on April 4th.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure. So we have to have a motion first.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, Tim makes the motion.
I'll second for discussion.
Second for...
Just in the superintendent's report, the welcomes by Principal Colby CD. The second initiative on the top of page three impacting both preschool and kindergartens, ISocial. It's also known as the pyramid model in my notes that was introduced.
Could you speak up a little Stephanie? I can't hear, sorry.
Sure. Just to clarify that the second initiative that was discussed by Principal Colby CD was ISocial. It was also introduced to us as the pyramid model. And I just would like to see that language added in there as it was presented to us.
I have a minor change on... I guess it's actually not that minor. On page four, the motion has to do with the special meeting. I remember it was mentioned, I think it's important for a number of reasons to include in that that additional signatures were submitted after the state law's deadline for us to act on the qualifying condition. I think that's important because we didn't get all the signatures within the deadline for us to act. So that was something that we really discussed at length. So I think it's important that we mention that.
We have a change. Okay, anything else? Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the minutes of the 4/4 school board meeting with the changes mentioned. Take the place, vote for both, or vote for Brody.
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair Wozzai as well. Okay, the manifest for this evening. Approval of the manifest, the accounts payable manifest that are being signed. Two million, sixty-four, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, thirty cents. The payroll manifest of one million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Total manifest of three million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and six cents. And as stated in the past, manifests will be available in the school, in the S.A.U. office for those that want to view them. We ask that you call and make an appointment if you want to see them. The totals are included in the minutes. That will be posted tomorrow morning.
Make a motion to approve.
Tim?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brody. Okay, all those in favor of approval of the manifest in the total of three million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and six cents. Brody?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair Wozzai as well. Okay? We'll move on to public input. Again, fifteen minutes for public input. If anyone would like to speak, please stand up now and we'll set my timer for five minutes. Second. Okay, anyone would like to speak? Okay, we will have public input at the end of the meeting as well.
Could I just say something we're up with, Jeff?
This isn't public input.
No, it's not.
Not for the board.
Not for the board? Okay, that's fine.
Can't jump back and forth.
I guess not.
Okay, student representative report, Phyllis is not here and I don't think she's given us a report. And she has a game tonight, so we'll certainly excuse her for that.
And actually, I think the game was supposed to be scheduled earlier and they changed it. So that goes without question.
She was expecting to be here.
That's fine. Okay, we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Jeff. The first part of my superintendent's report, I wanted to report on an initiative at the high school. The high school earlier in the year had noticed a marked increase in unkind and hateful comments from students, unfortunately. Now granted, we have students who have been out of school for a period of time and it's taken a while for students to get back into the routine. But it was noticed by faculty, administration, and students alike. So I am reporting on this because I'm really proud and grateful that our faculty, administration, and students have taken some action on this because they think it's very important for our students to feel supported and to come into school feeling like they're not going to be called names or diminished in any way. So a committee of interested educators came together with the administration with the help of students to do something about this. And so they began a no-swear, it's called a no-swear school, and it's a campaign. And of course, the code of conduct already deals with that. But this goes beyond the code of conduct and reminds students to be kind and has particular language that the teachers use to remind students that in fact racist comments, homophobic comments, hateful and unkind language is not acceptable. The staff, and of course, that is documented and depending upon the nature of the language, there may be further discussion and further consequences about it. But it's a very concerted effort by the faculty to make sure that students are using appropriate language and are not being disrespectful to other students or to faculty. So it's a, I think it's a very gentle approach. It's a very, it's an approach to help students be mindful of what their comments might mean to another student who's hearing those kinds of comments. And it's a message to the students that unkind behavior and hateful behavior is not going to be tolerated. So I'm, like I said, I'm very proud of the high school faculty and administration and the students because the students have also been involved in making this happen. So I thought it was important to report on. We have lots of things going on that we could, I could report on every month, but there's so many, you know, only so much time we can take for a school board meeting. We did have a couple of breed events, a Title I event at Osiphe and Effingham that involved a project that Stephanie knows well. It's called multi-tiered systems of support. And our partner from the community mental health center came and did a presentation to parents and had an evening where parents came in. That was according to the most successful evening we've had in terms of parents coming to the school. So it was a great evening. The other thing, and I know not every school is represented here, but I'll have more about other schools next time. We also had a group of sixth graders that traveled to Pluma State University to compete at the National History Day competition. And our students were professional, composed, and passionate as they were interviewed and accepted awards on behalf of Crescent Lake School and the Governor of Wentworth Regional School District. So just to let you know who the winners were. The placings for the state competition were first place junior individual paper was Jonathan Bronson. First place for junior individual documentary was Megan Riley. First place for junior individual exhibit was Jacob Pennard. And second place for junior individual exhibit was Henry Hudson. I just want to make sure there are no more on the other, yeah, there are a couple more on the next page. First place junior group exhibit, Claire Lucas, Lily Reeves, and Kylie Trobridge. Second place junior group exhibit, Sophie Nichols and Stella Babine. So good showing from our school district and impressively cool. Another positive note this past week was Teacher Appreciation Week. And I just want to read to you what went out on behalf of our school board, signed by Jack Whitman. Where there is kindness, there is goodness, and where there is goodness, there is magic. And so there was a little picture that went out to teachers. And this week and every week, I celebrate and appreciate your acts of kindness toward one another, our students, our families, and our communities. Your dedication, your steadiness, and your goodness has made all the difference to our students. In the best of times and in the worst of times, you have found it within yourselves to create the magic for them day by day. On behalf of the Governor of Wentworth Regional School District, I extend my deepest gratitude, wishing you all the best days ahead sincerely. And signed by Jack on behalf of the board. So we value our teachers very much and appreciate them.
Do we have a round of applause for teachers right now?
All right, and moving along, just wanted to update you on our district website. The website that we had been using from Weaveley was a very, very cost-effective website. It was, I think it was maybe forty dollars a year, but they no longer support the platform. So we had to do some research and look to provide a different type of website. So this really, Amy Rebo and Karen Libby did the lion's share of the work on this and Linda Murphy as well. So I'm excited that we're going to have a design that interfaces with our school messenger system. And I hope it's going to provide parents with easy access. We have an awful lot of information on our website and sometimes you need to dig pretty deep to find it all because there's just so much of it. So I'm hoping that this is a very easy platform for parents to use. And I'm particularly excited about the fact that there will be an app that you can download to your phone. So parents will be able to go right to their phones and just press on the app and it will bring them to the district website. So that, I think, should improve the ease of use for parents. So if the project is complete before the end of the school year, and I hope it will be, we'll do a demonstration at the next board meeting. If not, then somebody else will be doing a demonstration. Any questions about that? And then some more good news. We have a donation from Bill Tuff of Tuffington Borough who is a former pro baseball player, and he donated a radar gun. And I really needed to look up what a radar gun is. But I have learned.
Not for that speeding.
It measures the velocity of the pitch. So, and so you think about, okay, it measures the velocity of a pitch. What, how is that going to benefit our players? Well, it's to develop, used to develop different pitch speeds. And it's also used to develop arm strength and increase hitting power. So I just wanted to let you know that we've had that donation and we're grateful to have it. It isn't anything that requires any finances, insurance, or keeping it repaired or anything. If anything, it'd be twenty or thirty dollars to pay for it.
Do we need a vote to accept the donation?
It is an action item, so it's what you should take.
Okay, I'll motion that we accept the radar gun donation.
I'll second. Okay, all those in favor of accepting the radar gun? Brody?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yep.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair Wozzai as well. Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Next item is the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center's grant annually. We're required to do a survey in order to maintain that grant. It's a great program for our kids, but we always bring this forward to you for a vote because it is a non-academic survey. It's a very non-intrusive survey. I think you've all had a chance to take a look at it. The questions are really about whether the kids like the program or not, pretty much. And it provides very useful information for the program. I think the best aspect of having the survey complete is when we get the results, we realize how much the families benefit and kids benefit from the program and how much they appreciate it. So I think it's a very valuable thing to do. And of course, we need to do it for the program.
Is this, is this grant and program, is it fully funded by the state or is it just the state manages the funds and adds some assets to the federal? It's federal, okay. I was just curious, I just didn't know. I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we, I assume that we allow the promulgation of this survey for students to choose to do it with their parents.
Second.
Second for Charlene. All right, Brody?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair Wozzai as well.
So the next item is about the court brief. I hope that you've all had the opportunity to read the summary of the case. And this is something that Drummond Wilson is bringing forward to the Supreme Court this summer. They're hoping that the majority of school districts will sign on as friends of the court. RSA 171A would seem to provide protections for eighteen-year-olds and above who have disabilities. But in fact, if they're receiving special education in their school districts, these services have not been available to students as outlined in the summary document that was given to you. In particular, this case, the area agency found that the student was eligible for home and community-based services, but the Department of Health and Human Services vetoed the decision because the nineteen-year-old was still attending high school. And it doesn't seem legally or morally correct to me to deny services to a student who is entitled to services because they're in high school. So that, that's a very, obviously, that's a very cursory summary and you all have the details in the brief. So it's time for you to discuss whether or not you'd like to sign on. There is no financial commitment. You certainly could offer a small commitment if you wanted to. Some districts are doing five hundred dollars, some are doing more than that, but it's not required.
Wait, should I, should we make a motion for discussion?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we sign on as a friend of the court in this particular case.
Motion by Charlene. Seconded by Tim.
So for discussion, obviously, do we know who appealed the original decision or is this the first time that it's been in court?
No, I don't have that detail, Brody. I would imagine that it was Drummond and Wilson the first time, but I don't know.
Well, I, like, I would say, Brody, I couldn't see if it was appealed either. Because usually it would say that it would, you know, like, the first, you know, when it would say the first ruling was X, you know, and it never talked about the first ruling, you know?
I had a feeling it was maybe a new case and it's in federal court.
No, states.
It's still in the states.
So, so the state.
Oh, so must have, oh, yes, so must have been.
So it would be D H H S. Yeah, so that's why, this, I think, is the first round.
It could be, I just, I just.
Yeah, because it would say first, yeah, because that's, that's what I look for too. So I think this is the first time it's been heard.
The plaintiff in our school district?
No. No.
Any other discussion?
Is there anything in our, I'm kind of, I'm kind of wondering, because as a state official, because it is, you know, responsible, you know, responsible for the Department of Health and Human Services. I agree with, I actually agree with a lot of the logic in this. I'm just not sure if I need to, like, refuse myself or not.
You just abstain.
I think, yeah, I think I'm gonna, I agree with it. I want the public to know that I agree with it because I think this makes perfect sense and I think the state should not be holding this policy. And I think we probably need to change the state law, especially if this court case wins. But there's obviously, you know, it's D H H S is what I'm responsible for and I'm signing on to a, at least voting to sign on to a court case where, you know, where our school districts are signing as friends of the court to sue the state.
So I would just, I would abstain.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to abstain because of that. But I agree with the logic of it and I do agree that the state should be, should be changing the state law so it's clarified, so this doesn't continue happening in the future, so.
Okay, any other comments on this? All right, so all those in favor, Brody, you gonna abstain?
Yep, I'll abstain.
Tim?
Aye.
Wendy?
I support it.
Stephanie?
I will also abstain.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair Wozzai, anything ready? Okay, so we have seven ayes and two extensions.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, next, if I stay open here, I'll just go through it briefly. Members of the safety committee reviewed the plan we need to determine the appropriate changes. We are all aware that the pandemic is not over. The VA two variant is more contagious than Omicron, we know that. And we could well see a surge this summer. The good news is that the medical professionals are saying that the VA two is less virulent and our school nurses are seeing mild symptoms. They're actually seeing more severe symptoms with flu, which is kind of interesting. We do have the benefit of earlier plans if we need to go back and do more accommodating. You have this day open planning your packet, so I'll just again briefly go over some of the changes. All of the references to masking have been taken out as the governor has ordered that masks are only optional. The social distancing is still suggested, but not at the six-foot range. Only that students be spaced out as much as possible during activities. The document refers to the most recent C D C and D H H S guidelines on what to do if you have a confirmed exposure or have been confirmed positive. All the links have been checked, they're all live, they're all up to date. And so I think there's still a lot of very good information in it for families. There still is documentation of the symptoms of hand washing, of how to trust the children about COVID, for example. And lastly, and I think most important, is that if a child is exhibiting symptoms and a parent wishes to have a student tested, the school will provide antigen testing for the student with the information.
Which page is that on? I'm sorry, which page?
What page is that on?
Yeah.
You know, I have the full version here, so.
Okay, to borrow others.
Yeah, and it was, we have a bigger one than the packet.
Pretty early on.
Yeah.
Okay. But it is right in the document.
The question is kind of like. It's on page four of sixteen?
Page four, did you say?
Four, sixteen. Oh, here we go. I got it. Take your time. It's like the one, two, three, fifth bullet point up. Gotcha. Thank you. It's the third bullet up from the bottom.
Yep.
Thanks, Kathy. See, why do I need to memorize it when we've got Kathy?
Yeah, I have a question under confirmed. The two sections on page five, the top two, after the two links, confirmed exposure to COVID-19 and confirmed positive for COVID-19. You said that there's no references anywhere to mask wearing, but both those sections have references to mask wearing. Is that going to be updated?
Well, that, that is the recommendation from C D C. After you have had COVID, after the first five days, then it's recommended that you wear a mask.
But I thought the New Hampshire Department of Education said that that's not the case. So we could.
Just in that case.
Just in, so the New Hampshire Department of Education.
Just in the case of the COVID case.
This is just, right, yeah.
Okay. And these are suggestions or is it required for students?
We, we have not been policing that. In other words, if a student comes in after five days of COVID, we have not insisted that they wear a mask. Is that the recommendation? Yes. Have we insisted that they do that? No.
Well, if we're not gonna require it, then I don't, I don't see why we would have it in the sales plan if we're not forcing it. I guess I'm just a little bit.
Right.
So there's a lot of information in here, Brody, that we're not insisting on.
Yeah.
But it's still information for families so that a family can go to a link and see something on the C D C website or D H H S.
Yeah, because I noticed there are, there's a lot, a lot of the verbiage used as should, which is just a suggestion.
Right.
Yes.
Which, I understand that. So I was just kind of curious because the state, the state's kind of telling us one thing and obviously, you know, the federal government says another thing. I just, you know.
They're trying to write universal policies.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just, you know.
And this is more like best, best health practice.
Okay.
I have a couple points. On page eight, under classroom distance and cleaning, disinfecting, it says students will have assigned seats. And so I was wondering if we could not, I don't know if other folks thinks that's necessary, but I don't feel like that's necessary. What was the, what was the concern?
Page eight, as a classroom distancing and cleaning, students will have assigned seats.
Yeah, I mean, that, that is in the draft brief.
Yeah.
Are folks okay with crossing that out that we require students to have assigned seats? Is everybody okay?
It could be spaced wherever possible.
Yeah, and it suggests that we should space students out, but as long as they're spaced out.
I think in many classrooms, there are assigned seats. But I, again, it isn't anything I, I.
The other, I have a couple other very, very short things. Field trips and off-site activities are determined on a case-by-case basis. My question is, aren't they always?
Yes.
Okay, so do we, do we need that in the plan as well?
Well.
I think it's important for parents to have more information than less. That's my, sort of my default position.
Okay. And then the next little tiny point is the item right after visitors to the schools will be required to make an appointment. Members of the public in any school building will be expected to be COVID-free. Could we revise that to be symptom-free? Just to, because we're not, we're not testing people when they come through the building, but if they're visibly ill, that maybe we should, you know, encourage, encourage that to.
Why, okay. Symptom-free of, I mean, COVID, because, I mean, you know, they could have, they could have symptoms of regular influenza. They could have COVID symptoms. They could have, I don't know. But because this is specific to, my understanding, the sales plan is specific to COVID-19. And I think it's reasonable.
and I think it's reasonable to expect that if someone is coming to visit the school, they shouldn't have COVID. So, I mean, I don't, you want to take out COVID and, or, I, I guess I'm confused about what you wanted to do.
Yeah, I, I was, I guess it's just, it's an interesting that we are expecting people to be COVID-free, but it's odd, it's just like.
Yeah.
Really hoping that you're.
We're, we're expecting people to be COVID-free.
Well, it's a respect to people who use common sense.
Yeah.
Right, I guess maybe there's no other real nice.
Because if we say, if we say symptom-free, even a headache can be a symptom of COVID, so if you have a, a parent that comes into school with a headache, it might not be COVID. Now, we're not gonna police this, we're just wanting people to respect what we're asking and not come into the school with COVID.
So if I, if I understand this correctly, these are suggestions and the plan is essentially optional?
Well, the plan, the plan is.
So we're required to have a plan by the department, but we're not forcing our plan?
No.
That's not.
There's a difference, there's a difference between having everything in writing and enforcing. The places where we say we will do X, then we will do X. Much of the other information here is information for parents, or information from teachers, or guidelines, but when we say we're gonna do X, we're gonna do that.
Okay.
So that's helpful.
Yeah.
I think to your point, um, maybe an example would be if somebody does a home test and has a positive result, but no symptoms, then the request would be, why don't you not come in for now? I think that's the spirit of the state that.
Yeah.
It's, you know.
I'm convinced to leave it as it is. There is one, one, one more thing I would suggest, and that's in the last section for social emotional learning. If we could just add social emotional learning as part of a multi-tiered system of supports for behavioral health and wellness.
Where's that?
Uh, in page nine. So, social emotional learning as part of a multi-tiered system of supports for behavioral health and wellness has been an ongoing priority for Governor Wallace.
Where, where do you want to put that? In the beginning?
Right, right after the first, right after social emotional learning.
Okay, so she wants to add, so repeat what you want to add.
So it would read, social emotional learning as part of a multi-tiered system of supports for behavioral health and wellness has been an ongoing priority for the Governor Wallace retreat to most of the districts. So it's part of MTSSB, and so just to state that, because what follows is all of the things that we're doing, which are part of the multi-tiered system of supports for behavioral health and wellness. So just to clarify that for parents.
Is MTSSB the only thing we're doing for emotional support?
Is, is what?
Well, if we, if we add that specific language, aren't we doing a lot of other things throughout the district?
Yeah, so that's why I say, as part of a multi-tiered system of support, so we have a tiered prevention framework, and so social emotional learning is one part of it, and there's many examples of it in the paragraphs that follow, so introducing that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good, good addition.
That's all.
All right, any other comments on the stay open plan as modified?
Thank you.
Dana? Okay. Okay, then, uh, I'd look for a motion to approve the revised stay open plan as modified.
Make a motion. Or to revise.
Stephanie? Stephanie Pittman? Okay, uh, any other comments? Brody?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Jim, what's I? Okay, excellent, thank you.
The next piece, there's a lot tonight that seems to be attached to federal funds and grants. The next item is the general assurances. In order to receive our federal funds each year, we need to agree to implement and sign what's called general assurances. I know many of you have seen these many times, because we do this every year. They've been signed for years, however, the last two years, the DOE has required, the Department of Education has required that they be discussed at these meetings. So, um, you have all seen a copy. The assurances include things like civil rights and non-discrimination, rules around lead paint, human trafficking, drug-free schools, purchasing, the purchasing process, uh, retention and access to records, and more. But the important thing, I think, for everyone to know about this is that these are all things that are already codified in law and policy, so they're all things that we are already following. So, what, what I need from you is just a vote saying, yes, we agree to follow these general assurances. It's just another, I think, um, safety for the federal government to know that we're following laws, state, federal laws and policies.
Once we take the vote, uh, the chair, the school, can sign it to each one of the pages.
And just, I have one question, what were the changes that happened between this year and last year? As I didn't see last year, so I was just gonna do this.
As far as I know, Brody, there have been no changes.
No changes, and that's kind of.
We were just sent what I believe is the same general assurance as last year.
Okay, no, I'm just, yeah, I'm just curious, it's not like we have, I mean, I assume we'd lose that federal funding if we'd end up doing everything.
We would, yeah.
Yeah, so.
We're moving it past application.
Along, yeah, but we also do all the things that we're supposed to do, so.
Yeah.
Move to accept. Okay, we'll put Jim Pittman second. Second one, like Tim. Okay, all those in favor approving and signing the, uh, general assurances.
We get forty-four. Yeah.
Okay, that's just incorrect, and the, uh, the gender is, general assurance, please give your twenty-two. Okay, uh, all those in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim, and, uh, Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Jim, what's I, well, thank you.
The next agenda item is another half the agenda item, is a, is a return to some out-of-state field trips, so as has been my habit, I'm just informing you of those trips that are going out of state. And we have some seniors that are going to Boston to see the Holocaust Memorial, so that should be a really great trip. And it's being chaperoned by our English teachers, and Sophie Essex and Mr. Goffler, and then all family larys also. Oh, it's Mrs., excuse me. We have two family larys in the district. Thank you, Heather. So there's that. Tuckton Borough Central School, that's all of you will remember, we have had a tradition of students going to the Boston Museum of Science. So this won't be an overnight trip, because I don't think we're quite ready for that, because the spacing at the Boston Museum of Science overnight is not all that great. So, uh, so it will be a day trip, so students will depart at eight in the morning, and then they'll return at seven thirty AM, but it's always just a great trip for the kids, so I'm excited for them that we're starting to see some of these things happening again. And then, uh, we have a student who is, you've heard Kathy talk about some of the, the national conferences. We have a student from our precision manufacturing program who's going to the Skills USA National Leadership Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, which is a big deal for a student. And our students tend to do very well, so I'll keep my fingers crossed that this student is get some kind of recognition while they're there. And there will be two, two chaperones to one student, so those students will be well. So, those are the, those are the three out-of-state field trips, I'm done. Let's see, all the grant information, this is another, this is a really positive meeting tonight. We have, uh, are fortunate to have had two part-time grant positions approved, one through the Special Education IDEA Grant, and the other half through the CTE Perkins Fund, and the idea is to combine these positions for one full-time position, and it will be a full-time counseling position to be housed in the CTE Center. The purpose of the position is multifold, we've seen an increase in students who have had some mental health needs, especially our population with emotional disabilities. And at one time, we did have a dedicated counselor to that population, and then, um, that transitioned, transitioned into a social worker when that was a higher need. At the same time, uh, we also have a need for some career development services in the Technical Education Center, so the idea is to combine these two positions, have the, have the position housed in the CTE Center, and have it be a bridge between the Guidance Department at the high school and the tech center. With the idea that the more students that are coming down to the tech center, the more they'll be exposed, and the more, uh, they'll be interested in what the technology center has to offer. So I think it's a really cool idea to be blending the two positions, and I'm excited that we have the grant funds to do that.
Will that council be able to see students from our sending schools as well?
Yes. Because the idea is to, is all, it's twofold, as I said, part of it is, is career help, and so they would also be helping. And then the last is the School Boards Association, we do need to establish some dates for training, and I will ask Lynda to get another spreadsheet out for you, so that we can get a date when everybody can make it hopefully, and when the School Board Association can make it as well. And I would imagine.
I have a little bit more on the School Board Association as well, we had a, uh, Zoom meeting, uh, last week. One of our members, uh, attended the COSPA, uh, Consortium of School, State School Board Association. Nobody likes the name, the term is COSPA. The, the new association, uh, as you know, we, we pulled it out of the National School Board Association. So far, twenty-two states have signed up specifically for this association, there's another half a dozen states that are, have signed up for this association, and they're also staying right now with the National Association as well. That's why, but they're making double clues and all that stuff. We had a representative attend the first, uh, meeting of the association in South Carolina, uh, two, about two weeks ago, and came back, the, it was a two-day conference, uh, where they basically discussed, uh, bylaws, uh, all the goals for the association, how, how the setup is going to be, and as I mentioned last time, uh, it's, it could be a unique association, because every member state, will be on a rotating basis, uh, to be, uh, in charge of the association. So, at some point, with Hampshire, we, uh, the, uh, second vice president, and then, uh, first vice president, and then president, every state that belongs will go to a site, to a cycle. So nobody has complete control of the association. That was basically the, uh, the hierarchy of the National School Board Association that created, uh, not only financial, uh, concerns, but power struggles, uh, which is just a power-hungry group of people that are running the association, uh, and creating lack issues. So, uh, it looks very positive, uh, in, I think it's sometime in the end of June, uh, there's going to be a second meeting, to finalize some of the discussion from the first meeting that we held in Chicago, and Barrett, uh, from the National School Board Association, attending that, probably with another board, I don't know, to get him put in, uh, to see what the actual structure is going to be to get started. The dues that Hampshire will be paying, the school association will be paying, will be somewhat less than we're paying to the National School Board Association, so we'll save a little bit of money there, uh, but the idea is that they want to be providing the same type of, um, legal and, uh, policy support that we're getting to the National Association, so I think it's a very positive move, and, um, you know, every school, again, every school board is a, you know, we only have four members, you know, four staff members, uh, in the office in Hampshire. Some of these, uh, School Board Associations in Texas, and, uh, who, who, you know, they've got, you know, a hundred and fifty people in their office. We're gonna have the same representation on the board, uh, running as Texas board, so I think it's a really positive thing to spread out, spread out the, the leadership of all this organization, which is going to be a really positive process. Okay, uh, I don't have any other correspondence for this evening, so we'll move on to, uh, committee reports, anything from academic affairs?
Not a peep.
Not a peep?
Not yet, not yet.
Not yet. How about building and maintenance?
We will be scheduled for a meeting.
I'll let you go first.
Well, I was just gonna say we'll be scheduled for a meeting.
Okay, we'll be scheduled for a meeting, and actually, because I did walk around, uh, did kind of look at the calendar, and trying to get something scheduled prior to, um, the next board meeting, it looked like, uh, June seventeenth, um, at ten.
You're gonna know the name.
Yeah, may, 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 sorry. Let's try, May seventeenth at ten AM, um, at the SAU office, if you guys can check your schedules, and, um.
I'll set that.
Yeah.
And that's.
But that's the whole, for building and maintenance.
Okay, ten AM on the seventeenth?
Yep.
We have the full start, our lunch at twelve, so we're gonna run to about an hour at the SAU office, okay? This one, this one to check.
We planned that, right?
That's it, that's what I said, this one. I'll be there.
Did you say ten?
Yeah. And the only other thing is, we did receive our monthly update, um, from the custodial staff, um, certainly, there's been things going on. April showers bring May flowers, well, April showers bring leaky roots, so we had a few leaky roots, um, those got fixed. There were other things that kind of popped up, but, um, everything's in the pipeline of being resolved, so life is good.
Thank you. Okay, I have nothing, uh, right now for human resources or finance, as we'll move on to, uh, closing activities, advance planning. You can see all the activities down below on the agenda, there's also a separate sheet that I think everyone has in their packet, with all the year and dates.
Plus the spreadsheet online, too.
Yes, so if you can, if you can make some of these, um, I mean, there's a lot of activities going on, which means grad graduations and, uh, sporting events, sports awards, academic awards, time and reception for an exploring, everything, so it's a tremendous amount of stuff to do between now and the end of school.
Yeah, the first one on the bottom, the year and course.
Yes.
It's not May tenth, it's June thirteenth. I think it was on it twice, so the first one is, is your thing.
Okay, we'll slide, I see it.
I could just ask about the high school graduation for the tenth, the eleventh, it's, is the, just to clarify, the intention is to have it on June tenth?
Correct, yeah, correct, Friday, Friday evening at, um, six.
The eleventh is the evening.
Correct.
So if it's on the tenth, it'll be at six, if it's on the eleventh, it'll be at ten?
It's Friday or Saturday?
Got it.
Unless it rains in the morning, and it looks like it's gonna clear in the evening, in which case it'll be at six something.
Okay, so we'll just wait and see what the weather does.
Okay, uh, will we get a foot?
Can I, can I just ask when that, like, at what time, parents can expect to know for sure, when that call will be made? It usually doesn't get made until Friday morning. Okay, so by Friday morning, parents will know a graduation.
Yeah, I think if you look at the weather Friday morning, it's gonna be raining all day, it's not gonna be raining.
Okay, I just, I was just, I was just hoping to give the parents a little clarity about, okay, we'll have a decision on Friday morning, June tenth.
I'm kind of wondering if we do, is there any way we can do a little bit sooner, because I feel like if it's a hundred percent chance of rain on Friday, and you can see on Tuesday or Wednesday, I think it would be fair to send a notice.
Guarantee the weather in the rain?
Well, I know. Meteorologists are the only folks that can be, you know, wrong more than they're right and keep their job.
I mean, I think it's certainly, certainly worth, worth looking at, I mean, if that's going to be the trend for all weekend, it's driving, it's always raining.
I would just hate to think people might be flying here, that they fly here and then they find a warning out that they have to change their flight back. That's the, that's all I'm thinking. There are a lot of people, it's logistically complex for them to see their loved ones.
I, I think, Brody, that we would do it as soon as possible. But it would be no later than Saturday evening, so hopefully, if people find, you know, that still be able to get out on Sunday.
Okay, yes. That sounds, as long as we're practical, that's more than, that's all we can ask.
Okay, public input. Okey-dokey. See, none will go to, well, we don't even have to have opposing comments, so I'll, I'll start with opposing comments. We had the joint meeting with the sending town from the vocational center, and let me tell you, it was a spectacular dinner that the culinary people put on. Every year when we come, they put on it in the forest while the meeting's going on, and it was just spectacular. The kids, the service, the food, I guess maybe the food was great, the service was even better. I mean, the kids were spectacular. They not only polite, attentive, just, just turned it, so it was a great start to this. Just wanted to say that. Anybody else? I'll make another.
I don't usually, but I did have Heather just pass me something that I think it would be nice for everyone to know about. As many of you know, Aunt Okala, who worked in the school district for many years, has passed away, but out there, what you see in front of the library is a patio garden that was built in Aunt's memory with donated funds, and so I just thank you to Heather for, for reminding me to bring this to your attention.
And I just want to echo your comments, Jim, that it's, it's always a treat every year to have, you know, to, to be there and get to see exactly how well our students are doing in culinary arts, and they were phenomenal.
Thank you. Anyone else?
As your, as your board resource for things astronomical, I felt that it was important to let you know, this Sunday evening, we're having a full lunar eclipse. It's going to be an exceptionally long lunar eclipse. Starts at nine-thirty and ends at two AM.
That's out of this world.
Eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty is a full.
Well, it'll start at nine-thirty. Totality will be for about an hour.
Five AM.
But a learning experience.
We'll have to stay.
Sunday night, Sunday night.
Great.
Excellent. Thank you, Jim.
I want to find out, I'll have to Google what you're supposed to do with your crystals if there's a eclipse, right?
Someone on the windowsill looking plants.
I thought that was a full moon in a moon, or eclipse, too?
Well, this gives it even more power.
Well.
Stephanie?
I was just going to say, so we, we took time to appreciate our teachers, which we could not do what we do without their work every single day. And I think it's also important to note that this Wednesday is school nurses appreciation day, and they have certainly worked their amount of overtime, and we really, I think, really celebrate and appreciate their efforts as well.
And, and, and following up, I mean, the entire support staff, I mean, everyone in the district, they, they went above and beyond with the quality of the last couple of years and really deserve our appreciations.
I know there is no legislative report tonight, but we're basically done with legislative session in Congress, so committee reports, video conference, et cetera, those are going to be approved and everything, and we'll find out what gets to the governor's desk over the next few months, we'll find out what's signed into law, and that's probably going to be something academic affairs will have to address, you know, during the summer, finding out how to be in compliance with their state laws. There'll probably be some updates, just so folks are aware, there's, yeah, there's some pretty, there are some pretty big updates that are coming down the pipeline, so it'll be interesting. So we'll have a lot of work to do to figure out how to be in compliance and figure out what the exact scope is and what's meant by.
Zero funds added to get compliant, right?
Well, the legislature did add a hundred million dollars to the education trust fund in the last budget, so there, there is some money. Obviously, you know, from our perspective, it's never enough, but, you know, we'll make to what we can and be physically responsible as we've been, so.
Thank you. All right, identity motions going to not focus under RSA ninety-one, eight, semi-colon colon three, paragraph two, for the UGILBAN first amendment.
Second.
By Stephanie. Seconded by Tim. All in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Dr. Jim?
Yeah.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair of science.